This conference will now be recorded.
I don't know the emergency evacuation rules.
For the moment, I would say head out the doors that say exit. You can go to the left immediately into the back parking lot or to the right onto Market Street.
Okay, thank you. Any changes to the agenda? Okay, hearing none. We'll keep it as is. Open to the public for items not related to the agenda. Go ahead, Donna in the audience, Donna Lieben? I think so, the one in the middle.
And then if you can just hit the button on the thing to turn on the mic so that people can at home can see, can hear you.
Yes, just a really quick comment and the only, it's, it's not really related to the, to the agenda. Because it's really just a comment. I, I sent a, a copy of the infill housings document from the city of Portland, Oregon. And, and the main thing I wanted to say is that I appreciate what you're doing in modifying the zoning ordinances for infill housing. But I think you really have to take a look at what kind of housing you want to be built. And then make sure, and then, and then figure out how to modify the zoning ordinances to allow that to occur. Cause it's, it's, it's not so easy to do it the other direction. So I encourage you to look at the Portland, Portland document. And as you're looking through your ordinance changes, do it with an eye toward, you know, what do we want to see here? Because as an architect, I don't really understand how planners do it the other direction. Just keep that, you just keep that in mind. But I did send Jessica, I think I sent you a link to that document. I sent it to a couple of you.
There you go. I'll make sure that everyone.
So just appreciate kind of keeping, keeping that in mind. And as I, I've noticed occasionally in this, in planning discussions, that there seems to be an attitude of, well, we need to have standard housing types. And that's true, but the higher density you go, you do need architects. And I'm not just saying that as a plug for architects, but I'm saying it, this is considered multifamily housing. And even, even if it's row housing and things like that, typically you do need an architect to, to get your approvals done on this. And the design can be much more suitable to fit within existing neighborhoods. You know, if someone's taking a look at it with that eye, you know, as, as opposed to just putting in some, you know, some cookie, cookie cutter type of, of housing, housing developments. So that's pretty much all I wanted to say. I'll listen now.
Donna, I appreciate actually the articles that you've sent. I know in the past you've sent items with regard to your expertise, which is lighting.
It's a big, it's a big one too. I tried to print it out and it's still printing.
But I think as a, as a non-planner, planner, I really invite ideas because frustrating to me. Monica's sent me some, you know, articles and items. And it's difficult because I too get frustrated about, you know, I don't want to be an elitist to say this is, you know, inject my personal likes with regard to architecture. But I also don't, I keep using the word, you know, the kinds of things that are being built out of TAF's corners. You know, just so, I didn't even know where to go to try to look at what's sort of interesting ideas, you know, why aren't we doing this?
Yeah. Well, this should satisfy those needs because there are dozens and dozens and dozens of examples from all over the country and some in England too. But just examples, you know, not floor plans, but you know, just this is, you know, this is how, and it gives the same statistics for all of them. How many units per acre is this? You know, how many bedrooms? What's the, what's the mix of units and stuff like that? Doesn't give cost data, but that was kind of beyond the scope. So yeah, I hope you find it useful because I'm, I'm certainly intrigued by it.
Thanks, Donna.
Yeah, thanks, Donna. Can I also say, so last week I was asking particularly within the conservation PUD for us to be able to think about how we can be more flexible with the design within concert. And this is, maybe there's something to what Donna's brought to us that can better articulate what I was trying to say. Because I think particularly in, so I don't know if there's, there may be infill ideas that may actually address some of what my concerns were about the smaller tighter space that conservation PUDs will create. So, and I'm not an expert in that. So that's maybe, I'm just passing that along as well. That maybe with those tighter parameters, something like this could be helpful too.
That's really the definition of infill housing. You know, the whole intent of infill housing to take small lots and to try to develop them in, in the character of the, of the neighborhood that's already there. And I think we'll be pleased with, because we, you can't design everything, you know, but, but this gives off a lot of different examples to see how they fit in to a lot of different kind of neighborhood in and around Portland. And it's a very well-done document too. I was impressed. It's not new either. It's about 12 years old, over 14 years old.
Great. I had seen Jeff Nick, I saw your camera. Come on. Did you have something you wanted to add?
Yes, Jessica, thanks.
And Jeff, can I just interject? Can you hear all of us okay?
I can, yes.
Okay, just making sure that the mic's working. You're, you're the, you're a person remote. So just checking in with you is a, making sure you can hear everybody here.
No, I, I can do. Thanks. Your, your technology is working fine, Paul. Yes. Yeah. So as you know, we've been following this closely and, you know, trying to keep track of what's going on. It's been a little difficult over this almost three-year process. But you know, there's certainly an effort, I know, to conserve land. That's, that's pretty clear. But I'm wondering, you know, does the town have a clear idea of what's conserved already? Between parklands and wetlands and flood plains and, and then, you know, land that's limited to development because of, they're restricted already or development set asides. It, it would probably be wise to have a number because when you look at Google Earth, there's a lot of green space out there already. And so I don't know if the town has done that, but it would be a, probably a wise exercise, given what you're, what you're attempting to do here. I also wanted to turn everybody's attention to a recent article in Vermont, Vermont Digger, VT Digger. And it was just the other day, planners said that they are well-prepared for Chitting County population growth. And it quotes Paul, it quotes Charlie Baker, regional planner, to encourage infill development, steering, steering new construction towards urban areas with sewer, public transportation and infrastructure. It calls Paul Connor is saying, we're in an area well-served by transit, water, sewer and electricity. And it's not surprising to us that this is a popular place to live and work. And Richard Watts, a UVM professor, says that we need to keep driving population growth into designated cities and towns where we have adequate sewer, water and transportation. And where growth can be accommodated more easily because basic infrastructure is already in place. You know, so if you, if you look at Google Earth, the Hill Farm in particular is clearly infill development. And it's certainly identified that way in the regional plan. I mentioned this before. So it's, it's a little confusing. It seems like there's a, quite an attempt to really restrict development on this particular piece of property. Maybe I'm wrong. Maybe, maybe you'll surprise me. But you know, if you're going to accommodate all of this growth, and there also is some data out there that's in this article that shows the growth in the last 10 years, where Essex was 12.8%, South Burlington was 13.3, and Williston was 16.2. So you're not unique. You're, you're accommodating your, your development, the regional development close to Burlington, which makes all the sense in the world. But if you restrict development opportunities, you're really going to push everything out further into these other outlying towns, which is just going to come more, cause longer commutes and greater greenhouse gases. So I'm somewhat confused by, by this effort that I'm, I think I see unfolding here. I did a little research and found the minutes of the March 24, 2015 meeting, when we presented a concept plan to the planning commission. Many of you were there. And I'll just read for the minutes. It says, Mr. Nick noted, we went through how we bought the land many years ago and envisioned a number of uses, including corporate offices, warehousing, single-family homes, light use, mixed-use, light men, light commercial and agricultural and orchard. They are leaving room for exit 12 and we envision a hotel. That's what I'm reading from the minutes. Also including a bus loop, additional potential parking structure or, and a park and ride. And the board, the, the concept we presented, it says here right in the minutes, the board liked the concept. And then Paul Connor went on to suggest that staff would probably want to come back to the commission with a comprehensive draft plan and text that was reflective of the, what is envisioned is this, is this transition. So that was all in 2015. So you can understand that nothing's happened. And we're now a little concerned or very concerned about what we see unfolding here. So I, and now I'm perplexed a little bit to, I don't think, maybe you have, but there's no, no effort to show that type of PUD. I don't know. Have you talked about a mixed-use, higher-density PUD? I asked that as a question. I don't know. I, I've been following. I don't think you have. Early on, I thought there was going to be an attempt to, to do that. But I don't think I've seen that. So anyway, those are my comments. I appreciate it and I'll sit back and listen. Thanks.
Well, a question. It's, it's now zoned commercial open space, right? Does that mean?
Industrial open space.
Does that mean, is there residential in industrial open space?
The very, very limited. So you can have one house for three acres, which effectively, given that industrial and business uses are allowed, it is essentially a non-residential district today.
And is a hotel considered residential?
Hotel is not considered residential.
So we have some work, I think, to do.
Yeah. And, and in the following up from Jeff's note from 2015, in the 2016 comprehensive plan, you did show the idea of, of a transition from a conservation and green area over towards the western and closer to the Village Dorset Park and We Are Nature Park, and then transitioning through mixed use to something that is more commercial in nature.
Or 100% residential. That's an option too.
I mean, that's, that's for you all to work through.
If Mr. Nick really wants to accommodate residential, that might be the, but anyway, we should probably talk about that at some point. Right.
So I think, I think Jeff, that's really helpful feedback, but it could be potentially more helpful if you have like a very specific ask, like I would like to see a PUD type. You know, you, you used a few words there to describe what you think you'd like to see. So, you know, I think, you know, if you wanted to follow up with maybe just an email with what you, you think your vision is, that could maybe help us in the next couple of weeks when we kind of get around to the, the mapping exercise. Cause you know, a lot of these things that we're talking about right now, we're talking about the tools without pinning them down to pieces of land right now. So I can see how that would be confusing.
No, I'd be happy to present what we presented back in 2015, maybe refresh everybody's memory. And, and because largely that vision is the same. And I think it was well-received back then. So I will, I will do that for you.
Yeah. Can I just ask also, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I mean, we are, we have been talking about the TND and the village residential. These are absolutely right up the line. So I'm confused about why we're not just suggesting that he look at the draft regs that we already have out there for TND. Cause that's, and then understanding that the TND really is residential, but that we have the village residential as well, which seems to cover a lot of what he's talking about. And my, and plus, we're not talking about zoning changes during, during interim zoning. So I just want to be fair to him as well there.
Right. Although in the case of the area around the Hill Farm, depending on what PUD types you want to do, that may be an exception to the rule of deciding about zoning changes. Because to that point, it's currently zoned industrial. We knew at the beginning of this process that that was a mismatch with the 2016 comprehensive plan. So that area may be one, if you do want to activate and allow either the traditional neighborhood, which there is a draft of Jeff, and I can point you to it, or the neighborhood commercial, of which there's the outline and Sharon, that's the last one that you haven't seen yet. And that's a little more tilted towards more mixed-use environment.
Yeah.
If the planning commission wants to enable one of those, that in the, in that area, that may be a place where you'd need to think about establishing an underlying zoning that is somewhat comparable to it. Cause it's a little bit of a mismatch to say it's an industrial district, but then the PUD allows residential.
Sure. I just, can I just finish? So my, so my point though, Jeff, is that there has been a lot of information on the, on the, we'll have to refresh where it is on the city's website, but during interim zoning, we've had definitely the maps that look at the acreage in protected areas. And I'm, I'm happy to help do a tutorial of navigating that if you'd like. And there also is the draft TND, which talks about building type, which talks about more density, how to manage it. So just, there is information out there. And so for your comments back to us, if you were to build on like what either seems to be missing there, because there is a lot of information that we've been working on. And I'm sure any of us would be willing to do a walkthrough with you so that you can prepare for a future meeting.
Well, thank you. No, I, I've been following many of your meetings, as you could, as you recall and trying to follow. But I just don't know which, which of these rules or zones will apply to this particular property. That, that's been the missing piece for us. So yeah, maybe we could have a dialogue about that. That'd be helpful.
My point was, it sounds like neighborhood commercial is kind of what he's getting at. But we have, we haven't gotten the specifics of that draft yet.
Right. Yeah. Well, you have the, you have a detailed outline, which is very closely, if, if you read it, it has all of the, all of the pieces. It's just not written out in, in a language style. So Jeff could work from that to see.
For neighborhood commercial?
Yeah. It was, it was a while ago that, that you've seen it. But yeah, and I can send it around to folks so you can become a little more familiar with it. But it does spell out the basics of it so that somebody could become familiar.
I guess, I'm sorry, let me finish. My, my other point was the idea is that we're going to get all of the PUD types kind of worked out and then go applicability in terms of where in the city.
Yeah. I mean, you did, gosh, in the before times, before the pandemic, you had an initial draft of what that would look like. But we, we, we felt that it would be important so that you don't wind up in circular conversations of, are we adjusting the PUD to match the property? Or are we designing the PUD and then finding the properties that's appropriate to, to get all of the information about how they work? Get you all comfortable with that and then revisit the question sort of one last time of where.
Okay.
Because otherwise I think it risks being somewhat circular, especially with something like the conservation PUD. Well, what if we tweak it this way? Then maybe we should apply it somewhere differently. And so it's just trying to help it be an efficient process.
Right. And you, anything else on the open to the public not related to the agenda? Okay, any announcements?
I only have one, and this is just more of a question. And I haven't actually seen the article. I've been looking for this article. But I think there's some confusion potentially among the city council about whether our regs require that our affordable housing is perpetual. And I have not seen the article in which this, I was contacted by someone concerned that a city councillor did not seem to understand that our, our affordable housing regs are perpetual. So I just wanted to put that out here. I don't know what the form is for ensuring that that can be clarified. And I haven't seen the article. So I, but I just wanted to raise the issue because our zoning, our regs do incorporate perpetually affordable housing. And so does the, the future draft. So however that can be clarified would be helpful.
You know what might be a good time to just bring that up in context is that, you know, at this point, our, our draft is including inclusionary zoning citywide. And I think that maybe when one of us like presents the new draft regulations to the city council, we could just be clear to say, and this would be perpetual.
Okay. And our old, I mean, our current are perpetual and the new continues to be perpetual. Thank, whatever, however, I just wanted to raise that.
No, that's a great point. And I guess the only thing I would add to it is that there could be a nuanced question on individual properties where if through some funding, outside of our regulations, somebody chose to make a property affordable for a certain period of time, that was, that could have been their choice. Or it could have been the, the funding that they received said must be affordable for 50 years. Our regulations are for when it's a bonus and or now under inclusionary when it's required. If somebody is of their own volition choosing to do it, then they're subject to whatever restrictions are from the funding or the grants, et cetera, et cetera. So it is conceivable and possible that there is affordable housing in the city that is not perpetual. But that's not because we, that's because they chose to make it affordable to begin with.
So it sounds like that would be helpful to fit in at the right time.
Yeah.
To the city council. Great. Thank you. Any other announcements?
I have an announcement, but a question. I, what's become of the airport task force?
The, it is still in the works. It's just with my having been out and the return to meeting in person, we just weren't able to staff it before. So it's, as soon as we get a deep breath, we will get it going. Thank you for the reminder though.
Jean, Jean is gone too, right? Did I hear that?
He is on, he's been placed on leave for the time being while there's a review going on from the city. But we don't, City of Burlington, which we don't, I don't know anything about it.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Okay, then we, any staff announcements?
Just one quick announcement, which is that today we announced that we have a new city attorney who has been hired and the city council at their next meeting will officially appoint him as city attorney. His name is Colin McNeil. He's worked in the private sector previously. And he's actually worked with us pretty closely on a few specific projects over the last few years. So we're familiar with him and he's great. And we're very excited to have him onboard. And he'll start in first, first or second week of September. Great. Yeah.
Okay, then we can move on to item four, the continued review of the draft amendments to the LDRs with Sharon Murray. Sharon, are you on?
Don't think Sharon's here. So she might be having some technical issues. So.
Okay, then we will move forward.
I'll walk you through it.
Yeah. So we did get some comments at the last meeting that we had kind of jumped ahead in the draft to address comments and hadn't really kind of started at the beginning to see if people had questions or comments on the first part. And so I know it's always hard when there's specific questions and things, but I guess if possible, we'll try, we'll try to move sequentially down through it. I know the conservation PUD discussion last week was the second discussion where we had already kind of talked about the first part. But I still think it, you know, we'll, we'll try to go a little more sequentially here tonight.
That said, as with last week, I, we can introduce this, the applicability, but I don't want to focus on the exact acreage of applicability because that's sort of part of that upcoming meeting about where it applies. And I want to make sure that you feel comfortable with the standards in it, if that's okay.
Completely fine.
All right. So this is your first review of the infill PUD, infill and redevelopment. And I think that the key piece that I just wanted to sort of do as an introductory to it is at the top of page two about that, this goes against exactly what I just said about not talking about acreage, but I think it gives the context of why this PUD type exists. So this PUD type is really, it's intended to operate in a way that complements the other ones. And also in a, in a way that is acknowledging that the, not every, that, that the built environment, whether it's a small property or it's a property that's in a built-up area, can't meet the exact pieces of what a classic, say, traditional neighborhood would be. And so what Sharon did in here under, under number two, that I've got up on the screen there, is she talks about this two, this is essentially describing the two main purposes of it. The first purpose, which we had talked about a while ago, when we were talking about traditional neighborhoods back in the spring, is to allow for some, it's, it's essentially an allowance for traditional neighborhood that gets some limited exceptions to all of the tough standards of a traditional neighborhood when you're less than 10 acres. When you get under 10 acres of buildable area, there's certain things that become tougher and tougher to fill, like the full blocks and the open space and things like that. The proposed number for a neighborhood commercial is lower just because that's a much more intense use of land. And so there's a lot more that you can do in a small space. The second purpose of the infill slash redevelopment PUD is to insert something into an already-built environment. So imagine a redevelopment of, I'll pick one at random, the, the Kmart Plaza. The Kmart Plaza already has certain things that even if you, even if they tore everything down on the property, there's certain things that are already fixed in place, like where Queen City Park Road hits it from one side. Where the fact that they've only got that little strip that touches Shelburne Road, they don't control the rest of Shelburne Road. There could be, in other instances, a major utility line that goes through the property. Or maybe if it was going to be, say, the Southland's property immediately south of that, there may already be some buildings that are in there and now you're working around them. So they're not tearing everything down. The, the U-Mall is of course in the Form-based code, so it wouldn't apply. But imagine the U-Mall being a really large version of this and it's sort of incremental. And they've got their sort of fixed points of access. And so you're working with that to accommodate as best you can. And that's essentially, everything else that follows is how you can get very close to the other PUD types, the, the traditional neighborhood and the, and then, and the neighborhood commercial, but that you get a little bit of flexibility on it. That's essentially what this is all doing.
I have a question.
Yes.
So when we were talking about TND, I'm not sure if it came up in conservation. We talked about in certain cases of smaller acreage, maybe under 10, doing like the mini TND.
Right. So that's where this comes in.
Okay. So this would be the mini TND. Like when we said mini TND.
Yeah.
Scratch that. That's infill.
Correct. There's, there's different ways, Sharon and I talked about a couple of different ways that it could have been drafted. You, this actually could have been two different kinds of PUDs. It could have been an infill PUD and or a redevelopment PUD is two separate things. Infill is often even smaller than this, but given that the commission was very interested in making sure that anything over potentially four acres was a PUD, she wanted to, per your guidance, she wanted to make sure that there was something viable in that four to 10 acre range.
But this goes to two acres as well.
Yep.
I think that's the part that was confusing me because it's not just the four acres. It goes down to two acres?
And that is specifically in that instance where there's something physically that, that is making it otherwise difficult to, to achieve as a normal subdivision.
But what in the TND makes it difficult for any of those things? Like why couldn't, I don't understand where the challenge is for people with the to deal with all those obstacles you just created, you just mentioned. Like where, why couldn't a TND handle those, those complications?
Well, because the, the TND brings with it certain requirements, like a certain amount of open space. You have to create full blocks. requirements, like a certain amount of open space, you have to create full blocks. Once you get down to a certain size, you may not in two acres be able to create an entire block. Or you may have sort of existing shapes around it that require some flexibility beyond what the TND itself does. And so this is an attempt to provide that flexibility, but only in the case of a very small property, so that if you had a 30 acre property, you're not getting that same additional flexibility. There's also some proposals in here on the very small ones to allow a waiver of the variety of building types. Or in terms of something like the open space, the civic space, you could assign it, you could look in the context and say, there's already a park just across the street here. That can count as my park. So it allows you to be a little more creative about looking at your context to achieve what, what you're, what you're trying to accomplish. Does that make sense?
Yes, I mean, I, yes, I saw, yes. So with, is that what we're talking about potentially being the solution to the, like, somebody asked last week, and I didn't see the question, it was pointed out to me later, what is the benefit of choosing to do a conservation PUD? What's in it for them? And is the infill PUD perhaps? Would, would that address some of what I was saying earlier about flexibility for the conservation PUD? I mean, is it really the infill? That would be addressed, I, I.
Yeah, do, do you want me to answer the question about the, the conservation PUD, like what it's, what's in it for somebody?
Sure.
Okay, without going too far of a sidetrack.
Sorry, I'm just.
No, no, I think that this is an important thing about understanding the purposes of each of these.
Yeah, and contrast.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and also, just so you understand, my, I just am also like, why do we need to do this one during interim zoning? That's what I'm really struggling with, just so that we're not overwhelming all of the public and everybody. So, yes.
Sure. So I'll, I'll try to answer both of those questions. So for the conservation PUD, imagine that somebody had two choices. They've got a 10 acre piece of land and say 30% of it, 40% of it is wetlands and forest block. In a standard subdivision, there is no reassignment of density. What happens is you would not get, you don't get credit, you can't move it around. A standard subdivision is not a PUD. You would only be able to subdivide from the remaining five or six acres. And then within that five or six acres, you get whatever the density is on the property. In a conservation PUD, what happens is you have to protect 70% minimum, so potentially even more that's on your property. But what you as a developer get is you get the density from the majority of the entire property and you can assign it there. So what you're getting is the ability to build at least the same number of dwelling units as you would have been able to do in a smaller area, which could be more efficient for your construction. Potentially, depending on the property, you might actually get a little bit more than you would have in a straight standard subdivision. Because you get to count the level ones, the, the, the habitat blocks. Essentially, the purpose, like, I'm speaking in sort of a lot of words here, but the purpose of the conservation PUD is to make sure that compared with a standard subdivision, the developer winds up getting the same amount of development potential at least as they would have had, had they just built the whole thing. So that's what they're getting is, is, is a affirmation from the city that if they could build 20 units before, they can build 20 units now, even though we've said 70% of it has to be protected.
So you said.
So, so that's, that's the conservation PUD in a very sort of conceptual nutshell. There's lots of sort of tweaks and adjustments when we talk about the SEQ, but that's, that's sort of philosophically what it does.
And, and we say that a conservation PUD, if it's large enough, the buildable area can also use an additional PUD. They can put a TND into the buildable area.
Correct.
Would this infill also give them potentially even more flexibility to what you're saying? Like, maybe, like I was saying before, do they need to have civic space in a conservation PUD if they're surrounded by walking trails? Would the infill PUD be the solution for, like, is that one way to look at this? That it's giving this flexibility? Because if not, I wonder if this isn't too, why do this one right now?
Right.
And the only thing that's different is that this goes down to two acres. And that's, is.
Well, to your question from before, a few minutes ago, you asked about the, what happens between that sort of like mini TND? That's where this lives.
Yes.
So that's, that's the other reason of why this exists, because there's a full traditional neighborhood which has all the requirements. And then if you're under 10 acres, this becomes your option to be most of a TND. So that's, that's reason one.
And our TNDs now are starting at 10 acres? I thought they started at four acres.
Right, but this is the way, this is the mechanism by which you get the four acre one.
Okay, so our TNDs actually aren't going to start at four.
No, they're going to start at 10.
Okay.
And then between, like, less than 10.
Okay.
We'd need to use these rules.
Okay, because our TNDs currently say four acres, but we're going to change that. So our TNDs are not going to be for four acres anymore, they're going to be for 10 and above.
Yeah, I think, I, I have to verify, but I'm pretty sure that the draft talked about an infill TND versus a full TND. And so this becomes your infill TND.
For anything less than 10 acres or whatever the number is.
Yep. And then the, the, the second part of it, this two to four acre thing is really about site constraints and the context of what's being built around it, sort of these, these unusual circumstances that otherwise aren't, don't have a place to live. So that's what, that's why Sharon felt this one was pretty important, to make sure that we're not creating these, these spots where a, a, a typical, you want to subdivide the piece of land and there's no other mechanism to do it. So this is creating a mechanism to allow for for, to, to accommodate that, because otherwise you're only using the current subdivision, the, the proposed subdivision regulations, which could be tough to meet.
So, and just so that we're all clear, like, everything we've been talking about up to this point has been four acres plus. This is the first time, this is the first PUD in which we're talking about anything less than four acres. And it's intentionally, some of the language is intentionally about working around and working with current. That really obviously speaks to infill and opens up a much larger part of the city, which is great, but that's complicated. Are we sure that we want to address anything below four acres during interim zoning? Is there a real reason to do that? Because there's a lot of opportunity, a lot of opportunity. And I say opportunity, meaning there are a lot of parcels in the city, throughout the city, that are in that realm. And the I know that we're on September 14th, talking about where would each of these go? But I'm, that's, I'm just trying to figure out it where these two to four acre areas are. And if there's something that has to do with more like commercial, like the Kmart Plaza, I don't know how many acres that is, that, that's one thing. But, but if we're talking about residential infill, there's, I think it has to be more, there has to be more to it than this. And, and I worry that that's, the timing, it, that's going to be a lot to go through. So I, I'm really trying to understand, why is it important during interim zoning to be addressing the two to four now? And if there's a very good reason, then it fits in very naturally, okay, and we can try it, but it seems to impact a lot of that we haven't had to address so far.
So one thing that we had talked about was that, you know, by having these new PUD standards, it means we're getting rid of the old PUD standards, which there's a lot of properties around the city, residential and commercial, that have relied on that PUD tool to have any kind of creativity to their parcels. So, you know, I think if we, like, were removing that crutch, you know, it's not a good PUD tool that we have now.
Does that go down to two acres? The old PUDs?
In residential areas, it's a two acre minimum. Elsewhere, there's no minimum.
Yeah, so it's, it's a, so I guess that's part of it. For me, why it seems like it might be a good idea, because we'd be applying some of these great tools that we've been talking about this whole time, some of these small parcels that wouldn't have otherwise had any PUD option.
Okay.
Which would have in the past, would have currently.
Okay.
I think Paul put it very well when you just mentioned, it's, it's almost like taking the particulars, the TND or the NCD, which we don't quite have yet, but, and just tweaking them, small sizing them.
And removing some of them, which is good. I mean, they'll have to have more flexibility. Okay, thank you. Sorry that I took so long without him, just.
No, no.
I'm still struggling with it.
It does make sense, so. And I mean, I think.
There are, it, it does say to me that there's a lot that's not mentioned in here.
What do you mean? When you say there's a lot that's not mentioned?
I don't want to take it off track. I mean, for example, like, there's all these road frontage issues, right? And maybe that's just in subdividing, but like every, when you're subdividing, everyone has to have X percent or X number of feet of road frontage access. Right? But that's not, I don't, I didn't see any of that mentioned in here as, no, you don't. And some parcels you can't access, if, if that goes away, no, you don't have to have road frontage on your two acre parcel, then you, that, that's, that helps, because then all of a sudden, great, there can be one, one shared driveway or something that's going in, but that's not what the current subdivision says, so.
Right, I would say that generally speaking, Monica, with the exception of something like a cottage court type setup, like the, like the Kirby cottages, all of these PUD types and the subdivisions tilt pretty heavily towards buildings front on streets. Or a civic space or a courtyard. That there's, that that's a, that's a fairly formal presentation, all of these tilt in that direction.
So, and this is where, and I don't mean it to go here, and I have to say, I'm in an R1 and I support infill, okay? So, but I, but I'm trying to go through the math on this. There, when you look at, this is why I don't know if it's worth addressing anything less than four acres right now. When you look on the map at those parcels that are less than four acres but above two, rarely do they have enough street frontage and they're generally blocked so that there's no passage through the parcels. You can't have street frontage. You have to, there, unless you can put a shared road to another part and make a, a city road, you, you physically can't because of the way the current structures, the current footprints, it's the current footprint language that was confusing me. That's why I'm like, just, just let it, don't talk about current footprint, because you can, you can either work on a current footprint if you want, or just don't. But you're, anything that addresses obstacles to me is competing with other regulations that are saying, no, you can't, you know, you can't put a street in, you, you must have road frontage, but you're not on a road. There's, I think the shapes of the parcels within South Burlington that are less than four acres and above two just really need a closer look than what I'm seeing in this infill. And this is an overall comment, I read the whole thing through, and I'm not an expert. But, so unless I'm, if I'm wrong and, and it's, can be clarified, great, you won't hear another peep from me about it. But I'm, I'm confused, I feel like the, and I'm not saying don't address it soon after, but to try to get this done during interim zoning, it seems to me that the areas between two and four are going to have a lot, there's going to be a lot of questions like that. That, and I didn't see the answers here, but maybe Sharon would easily be able to address them.
Do you understand you saying that the Kirby cottages would not qualify under this?
No, I meant to say that a, so, so there's two ways in which Kirby cottages could apply. One is the, the various PUD types talk about fronting on a street or a courtyard. So that could be, that, that's a courtyard that, that those buildings are on. Courtyard in a, in a big city could be just a U-shaped building, but in cottages, it can be five buildings around a little court.
I see.
You, we, there's also the ability to consider that to be a building type, which is something that you talked about when you're talking about the small buildings of saying, just like in our city center form-based code, in the city center form-based code, we don't have PUDs, as you know. We say all buildings must front on streets, except if you're doing a cottage court. So that's, that's a way in which that can be done. I'll have to see with Sharon about where she was last. I meant to say, that's a kind of thing that can be accommodated.
So if there's a house that they have acre and a half or two behind, that house would not have to be torn down. A driveway could go past the house and then a Kirby cottage could be in the back.
So a Kirby cottage court could be in the back.
Right, right.
Or under the accessory dwelling units, you could have an accessory dwelling unit in the back. This is trying to sort of find that sweet spot between the, creating an allowance for infill.
Right.
But not having it be haphazard and have just sort of buildings off long driveways that are three or four buildings that don't have any kind of relationship to the neighborhood or things like that. We don't have a lot of that in South Burlington, but there have been, there's examples in Burlington of, you know, built in the seventies and eighties of just sort of buildings in the back that don't have any kind of relationship to a neighborhood, they're just stuffed back there. So this is trying to create a tool that allows for infill, but in a way that everybody feels that they're part of a neighborhood.
Right.
Like the Rye neighborhood up off Heinsberg Road. As a, for instance.
Ear to my heart.
I knew you'd like that example.
Um, well, I guess. I mean, just, well, it sounds like Monica has some specific concerns around road frontage and whether or not we should be doing anything with these small ones.
If the commission would like, I'd be happy to sort of pose Monica's question specifically about residential on this sort of two to four acre and what, what is it gaining? I know that some of her interest in, or some of her proposal related to two to four acres was on the commercial side also. That's a fairly big piece of land for commercial.
Right, and that's what I'm trying, and I'm not, I'm not opposed to, let me be very clear, I am not opposed to residential infill on two to four acres. I just think there was a lot, I was left with a lot of questions. If it does, if her mind is more in concerned with the commercial, maybe, and that's easier to tackle, it, yeah, that's it. If, if it's, if it's, if it's not as complicated as I'm, was reading or trying to understand it in here, then I'm all for trying to keep going with it right now. If it, if it does seem to become bigger, I wonder if it's, and I actually thought that we, a long time ago, had a as a commission agreed to not do infill until after interim zoning. We, we had, I don't know if it was a straw poll or emotion, but we did that a long time ago, but I remembered there was a reason that we had to revisit that, so totally fair.
I have a different question. It seems from the language of the definition of infill, I mean, I think of infill as something that's reusing property that's been used before. As simple as that. But it seems here that infill development on vacant or unused tracks or parcels could be actually a big, a natural area that has never been used before. You know, a vacant lot. And I, I don't think that's what we really want infill to be, right?
I think you're raising a really important and good question, Paul. So the Sharon would say that classically, these these, these PUD types, like a traditional neighborhood, ideally would be even much more than 10 acres, but, but start at 10 acres. I think that this is her attempt to achieve the commission's goal. When you set upfront, you'd like for PUDs to be required at four acres or more. And so I think it's, she would probably say classically, your definition of, of, of infill is a, is a classic, is a more classic definition. Infill means. Infill means stuff's built up around it. It might be a greenfield site along, say, Shelburne Road where everything else around it is built, or it might be a property like K Mart or something like that.
Sure.
So I think that this is a draft to try to reflect the commission's goal that you set upfront of saying, we'd like for PUDs to be at, required at four acres. Now, that's part of why we wanted to revisit this whole question of applicability in a couple of weeks' time. Because ultimately, if you say, you know, we've read the subdivision standards again, and we, we, you know, you could come to the conclusions, conclusion to say, we actually like our subdivision regulations. We'd be perfectly happy if somebody built a traditional subdivision up to X acres, with the exception of the conservation PUD. And then the need for this in some cases might, you know, you may say it's not, we don't want it in this case. That's, so I think it's a great question, a really important one, and that's why we wanted you to have a full understanding of all of these and then say, let's adjust them. So a long, roundabout answer to your question.
Well, I'd be all for, obviously, you know, restricting infill to what we conventionally think of as infill, so.
So, and Jerry, just to piggyback on that, that's where, I think that's where I'm struggling too. Because if, if what we said last week with the conservation PUD, which is the goal of then securing 70% of the natural resources on a parcel, say it's 10 acre, a 10 acre parcel, or say it's 12 acre parcel. I'll say it's a 10 acre parcel. And, and they will conserve 70% and they're left with three acres. Then that's, and that could be unbuilt land. So then they could be using this infill PUD within those three acres. This would be the tool for them to do that, potentially giving them more than what the underlying zoning was. Cause this would allow for a minimum of the four acres per union, union, unit, or some, or something else, whichever is higher. So if they, if they wanted, and this is another benefit to doing the conservation PUD, as I see it, which is you can conserve all this 70% and then you can infill on your third, on your three acres, but then to Paul's concern, that's, you know, that may not, there might not be anything right there, so.
Right, but, and, and these are all options that you can consider. You can consider to say, if you're conserving 70%, then something like this does make sense. I don't want to take too far a step aside, but I, I think it's, I, I want to reiterate something that Sharon had said a few months ago, which is the PUDs are a tool in the toolbox. They're not necessarily the tool to solve all things. Some of, I think, our collective struggle with some of this is that the PUDs are especially good if you're looking to do conservation through a conservation PUD or you're looking for something really creative on a larger lot. The companion piece of it, which we have not done as, as a city, is take a hard look at the underlying zoning to say, you know, we talk about getting some more density and infill in these areas. One could do that without a PUD by looking at the R4 zoning district in the Chamberlain neighborhood and saying, maybe that should be modified as a zoning district to be eight units an acre or something like that, and then bring in the housing types that Donna spoke about. Like that's, that's another piece of the puzzle that was, you know, we'd, we'd recommend that you think about in your upcoming, you know, your next work plan about taking a hard look at the zoning districts themselves. The PUDs are sort of a creative solution to work around zoning districts and/or to deal with conservation or really big creative properties. So I, I only say that as, I, I don't mean to sort of sidetrack the conversation, except to say, I think we've all struggled, including me, a little bit with the, how do we get it to work for all things? It's probably not meant to work for all things and that's okay. So there's, there's plenty of work to still be done when you're done with this.
So it seemed, I mean, I, I like the idea of having this, this tool available, you know, for those, those sites that are probably not big enough to really support a full TND or, you know, other PUD type. And I guess that's because I like a lot of the things and elements that we've put into the PUD work. And I like the idea of them being able to apply to some of these smaller parcels instead of only using the subdivision as the only option. And part of that is because, you know, I, I do want to make sure that we're developing efficiently, you know, cause if we're talking about the buildable area and it's going to get built anyway, you know, I'd kind of like to see a lot of these more creative elements that we've been talking about with the PUDs happen. Instead of it being developed with the only tool being the subdivision, it just, it feels like this extra, I just feel like we're going to get more out of these developments if this is an option. And, and maybe Monica, you're right that there's some things in here that just aren't quite right or they're confusing. But I guess it might be nice to try to like go through and see if we can kind of address some of our concerns, so we, we're not just kind of throwing out the PUD elements for these size parcels. Cause I, I think there is a lot of good stuff that we've worked on and, and, you know, it seems like some good flexibility in here for the areas that are going to get developed anyway, you know, and I think that's, to your point, Paul, like, you know, I don't know that we want to be in encouraging loss of green space, but if a green space is going to be developed anyway, you know, we, we might want to figure out how to make it work well for our other goals.
You know, point, time of green space, it's certainly kind of thought, you know, dial out 20, 25, 50 years out. And the whole Williston Road, behind Williston Road, city center's fully built out. And who knows how many children there are. My gosh, where is the green space? You know, it, they're going to be in the natural areas in the, you know, the park. And that little park, O'Brien, was it Tom? Trying to think of your, near you, well, across the road, it's not really a park. But let's say there's a thousand more units there. Is there going to be sufficient green space? So again, I'm throwing this out, which is not, but you went, mentioned green space and suddenly boing, that, that's something that we really should think about is how much acreage throughout this whole area should we provide for kids just to throw a ball around? Or do we want it really an urban area where they're kicking a ball and, you know, on the sidewalk and stuff? I don't know.
So as drafted Ted, the subdivisions and the various PUD types require in the future that 10% of your buildable area be dedicated to civic space, to an active use space. And I think Monica, you'd asked with the conservation PUD, can that be removed because there's walking trails? I, I, I think that's a commission discussion. Sharon felt that even if you have natural areas, there's still a need for active use. There's still families there and kids still want to kick a ball around. So that, that's her recommendation there. So I think that, so there's two levels of civic space that are in the proposed rules. One is at the subdivision slash neighborhood level where you get 10%. The second is to weave in and the, the work that was done in the form based code at the site level. So if you're doing a commercial building or you're doing an individual building, that there's a place for people to eat lunch or have a little playset or things like that. And, and that still, that would, is proposed to apply at the site level that complements the neighborhood level. The third level that I think is a citywide responsibility is how do we serve the large park needs of the city? And that really can't rest entirely. Based on the scale and size of our parcels in South Burlington, we don't have, you know, 700 acre parcel that's going to incorporate a huge park in it. That's the other tool in the toolbox.
So how do we handle the?
The citywide parks, you know, a place like Veterans Memorial. That, that's really got to be a different tool in the toolbox. Because, you know, if we had, like some places out west, 800 acres as a tract for us, for, for a new PUD, then they can incorporate, incorporate a huge neighborhood park. But we're talking about 10, 20, 30 acre parcels at most. So realistically, we're not, none of those are going to have a ball field in them.
Right.
So that's, that's the complimentary work to do of making sure that that we're, that we're planning for those sites and acquiring those as needed. But that's probably going to have to live mostly outside of the regulations. If not, or maybe there's a way to sort of, you know, if you give us this, we'll give you X in exchange.
So Paul, just to make sure I understood what you said. So if a piece of land that's kind of too small for one of the full PUDs gets developed, whether it's developed with the subdivision or if it's developed with this infill that we're talking about right now, in both cases, they have to dedicate 10% of the developable land.
So the.
I guess I'm just making sure.
The infill PUD does give some authority for the DRB to adjust that based on the needs of that individual parcel, and I can look at it exactly. And this is where the, the infill becomes a little bit different. So it says, for an infill PUD, the applicant may request, or at the applicant's request, the DRB may reduce certain minimums that it, to include consideration of existing complementary development, civic or public spaces that are accessible in the immediate vicinity. That may include reducing or waiving minimum civic space requirement if direct access is provided to a civic space publicly accessible within a quarter mile. So you could be exempted from it if you can demonstrate that a quarter mile away, there's, there's a publicly accessible one available. So that's sort of, that's, that's the way the infill differs from the other ones. You, you could demonstrate, for example, I'll pick on the Rye neighborhood again. There's, there's a small parcel immediately north of Rye. It's a thin, narrow little parcel. In theory, they could say, there's a civic space in the middle of the Rye neighborhood. We're only four and a half acres. We, we're asking board, if we build a direct sidewalk over there, can that one count for us? That's the way the infill differs from the 10 acres when you can say, no, no, you've got plenty of room. And, yeah. Does that make sense as to how that functions a little bit differently?
Provide also for adjacent property, you know, you have adjacent properties and that they could combine their effort. So you suddenly have 20% in one area as a, so piecemeal 10% here, 10%, you know. Any way, I'm not sure if you can do it, the regs, but to encourage that in some way, you know what I mean?
Yeah, so I guess there's, there's, it's, we can't require somebody to work with their neighbor.
Right.
However, a big change in all of these proposed regulations, especially at the master plan level, is if you look at a site plan that we get typically today or subdivision, it is very much focused on the parcel. The master plan requires that you show the context. I can't remember if it's a quarter mile or a half mile away, but showing all the connections to everything around you. So that you're seeing where are the natural areas near you, where are the streets, what are the neighborhoods? Not just where are they, but what's the character of them? So that you can have an informed conversation about how to integrate in with it. So I guess that's the first part of how that would be done Ted. We're always encouraging folks to think creatively about how to work with their neighbors. And we often do introductions. And I think, you know, we, we've had several conversations, for example, in the city center form based code area. Somebody comes in and they say, we've got this parcel, what can we do with it? And we, and we'll say, well, you can do X, Y, and Z. But if you really want to maximize use of this property, the form based code calls for buildings to be on streets. If you want to maximize this property, you should work with the adjacent property. Build a street that goes through both of your properties. And then you will see that each of you can probably double what you could do individually. And I think that that's, there's a human element to all of this. And it's that kind of human element that I think has to be, like, we can't force somebody to work with their neighbor, but we can say, if you're working with your neighbor, you know, you might be able to have a much better park. You might be able to connect your roads and put more in there. You know, you, so, you know, it doesn't always work.
Right.
But this will give us even more tools to have those conversations with folks and encourage them to really talk with their neighbors and, you know.
Good.
Yeah.
I know one thing, Michael, you know, he had sent some notes over and something that he had pointed out. I also kind of have some questions about, you know, there's a lot in here about the context and fitting in with adjacent areas. And, you know, what if what's next door is not what we want? You know, and like, you know, if we really want to see kind of improvement in some areas, like, like how does that work? Like who judges if what's next door is, you need to match that or if it's not really what we want to see and we'd rather that they didn't match that? Like, it was very hard to tell how that got addressed with all the talk about compatibility and context.
I, I think that's a great point, and I actually shared that same comment on, on the draft. I think on the residential side, for the most part, being complimentary to what's around it while still allowing for some innovation is a really important tool. On the commercial side, I had the same question. And I, you know, I know, you know, we're speaking about the form based code again, but when we started with that project, one of the, one of the hardest things of developing the code was classically, they're in partially built up areas or historic areas and you, you build off the bones of what's there. There's a lot of, Shelburne Road and Williston Road are eclectic. There's some really great examples. There's some examples of stuff that was built. If others feel the same way Jessica did, I will share that question and comment to.
Yeah, and it goes, again, with thinking about these smaller parcels, because there very well could be a parcel with a larger home that has space to create a whole small neighborhood. Those would be, first of all, not necessarily the same as the, the starting house and then all the neighbors. So, but, but it's such a great opportunity that how, how can that be done? So, and how can somebody have the right to do that? And have the flexibility, because they can't, if they have to stick with what's right around them, they might just be stuck with building McMansions and that's not what we'd want. So, you know, unless they tear down the first one and start all over again. But then there's still whatever they're surrounded by. So I, I did have the same, the same comment.
Okay.
And you know, I think if that can be like addressed, then a lot of, a lot of this is quite good to me. You know, and maybe there's other questions or tweaks people would want to see.
I think that, and I'm thinking back to, what was, what's the road off 116? Where we had a gentleman who was not happy about the infill over there. Highland Terrace. So I, I was just thinking along that line that I think Jessica just mentioned. What, what is the avenue? And this may not be part of the PUD thing, but what is the avenue for input from the neighborhood about infill? Cause you're definitely going to get some feedback on that.
Right.
I don't know if there's a way to build.
Yeah, I think that, that, to me Duncan, that's part of where you decide to set your thresholds, which per Monica's point. Using Highland Terrace as a specific example, that might be a circumstance where, let's say the properties are right on the edge of being PUD scale, because they're sort of right in that, some of them are more than two acres, some of them are less. That's where maybe, as I was mentioning earlier, looking at the underlying zoning and saying, what, what is the goal? Because what has been happening on Highland Terrace is three or four dwelling units per acre, which is exactly what the zoning calls for. And so what people are seeing being built, there, you've had a few comments of folks not happy with it. But that does line up with exactly what the zoning called for. But that does line up with exactly what the zoning called for, forget PUDs. But, you know, that, that's, that's what that called for. And so it's achieving, it was putting little homes up along the street. And so, you know, that, that kind of fine-grained review is. For very small properties, maybe a follow-on, but um. In the infill PND, that, that's what Sharon was trying to capture here. I think what's, what I'm hearing that is a tough thing to, for anybody to answer is, we want to reflect the character when the character is good. We don't want to reflect the character when the character is not good. And how do you judge that, right?
Well, and also that anything we do create, we want to give the landowner, the developer, the confidence that they can do what's here. And if we're creating something where they're just going to con, you know, where they're going to be constantly. Challenged by. The wo, the worries of infill. It is, it seems like there's a more comprehensive way to pour stake in the ground.
Right. So the way that Sharon tried to write all this is when she spoke about density, she tried to use fairly strong language. That said, buy right. This is what you get by right. And then you then have to go and figure out how to match the character. And so I think that her approach was to say, you do get this amount of development. Assuming you can match this character. And so you, you as developers, on you to figure out. How to get those things. It's not a question of. Oh, you know, we don't want that development because it says you get it. But you also have to meet the, the character part. So it's, you know, it's sort of both a, a carrot to the applicant. To say, you know, we're saying that if you can, if you meet the character, you do get this. Also, you have to create transition areas and, and, and be complimentary to what's around you. So you've got to be really creative.
Ask a quick question. In, under the subdivision regulations, is this same issue addressed? In other words, you. When, when subdivided land, if you're not doing an infill PUD, you've got to match the neighborhood context?
Not in the same way, because in the subdivision regulations, the, you go back to the lot sizes that are laid out. In, for that zoning district. And so in the R4 district, the subdivision regulations say that. A single-family home cannot be on less than 9,500 square feet. Two-family home needs X amount, I think it's 15,000 or something like that. The, in the subdivision, that's sort of how that is taken care of. You still have to connect your roads, you still have to plan your open spaces, you still have to create civic spaces. But there isn't the character analysis in the same way, because it's a straight subdivision. So the character then winds up being based on more fundamental things like lot size setbacks. The number of buildings allowed in the structure, any standards that you might lay out for, uh, you know, front doors and windows and orientation and that kind of stuff. So the, the higher standard comes with the PUD that allows you to create smaller lot sizes. But in exchange, you have to do more to be context sensitive. And I guess Sharon's response to. The, the next question that I was imagining from you would be, well, what if the zoning doesn't match what's around it? And, you know, doing the house on 9,500 square feet is totally out of character with what's around it. The answer to that is, then we really should be looking at the underlying zoning and saying, why does our underlying zoning not match what's around it? And this is conversations, you know, back in my, back in my um, former life in Rutland County. I worked, say with the town of Fairhaven on their village area and they were looking at the zoning and they had minimum parcel sizes of like. You know, 12,000 square feet for a single-family home. Every house in the village was on like 3,500 square feet. And so they were forcing every new house that was being built to not match its context around it at all. And so that's. You know, the answer to that is, here's your disconnect. That's what we need to solve is like. Does that make sense as to?
Yeah, no, I guess what I, what I was thinking is what, what does somebody get by using the infill versus the subdivision? They get, they get a smaller lot size. And the ability to put.
Right. So you do get the smaller lot sizes, you get setback, setback waivers, you get things like that. You uh, might, I'm trying to remember where, um, you get the ability to, to reallocate density. Within, within your development again, instead of subdivision is just straight.
So and. So, so this is something else that um, confused me in here, but maybe it's because this is something we address on the. On the September 14th about where this goes, but under base density 3A, and sorry, I'm not sure where we are in our. It says the minimum required base residential density within an infill TND or other residential IR PUD. Is four dwelling units per acre or the maximum residential density allowed. Within the underlying zoning district, whichever is greater. Whichever is greater. So if there's like an R2. They, somebody can say, well, I know I'm an R2, but I'm going to use the infill and I get to use whichever is greater, which would be. Four dwelling units per acre.
Correct.
So that's basically enabling them to. Yeah, to separate from the underlying zoning, which gets to what you were just saying.
Right. So that's an example, what you're just reading of, that's taken essentially directly out of the TND itself. So the idea behind it is. One, for a traditional neighborhood to work, um, in terms of functionality, you want to have a certain minimum density. Two, the economics of it don't really work otherwise, because there's a lot more infrastructure that goes into. The small block sizes and things like that and all the civic space and those things.
No, I get that. I mean, that makes sense when you're talking about like a 10, a larger. Parcel, because you can naturally. You know, have the boundaries between, if, you know, if there is a 10-acre parcel that happens to be right next to an R2, they can still. Have the natural transition of building types from here to there. But if you're talking about a two, three-acre parcel. There's not a lot of room for transition between and they will by default have the right with this. With this um, infill PUD. No, but that's why it may be more of an issue for where would this be allowed?
Right. Now Sharon does have in the language a little bit below there. The DRB may allow for a reduction in the minimum density to a lot to address the following. Physical site constraints, adverse impacts to adjoining properties that cannot be avoided.
Yeah, that, that puts a lot on the DRB then. That's going to, what adverse impacts could be a bunch of neighbors that being really test. I mean, that's, it, it puts the. To me, that puts an unfair burden on the DRB. Like if we're going to do this. It, it's like, nope, we're, we want, you know, we want to change the, we want to enable people to. Create neighborhoods in areas where they aren't right now, but it, where it makes sense. And so we're, no, we're going to allow them to. Have this kind of density. And some people, guess what? You're going to have some new neighbors, but then to say, oh, but, but the DRB can. You know, it, it just feels like we're saying, well, look, here's.
She was trying to write it pretty tightly to say that it's only in the following circumstances. Um, but I, I appreciate and I'm sure the DRB would appreciate, you know, anything that. Inherently, a PUD is always somewhat of a negotiation. That's, that's what it is. And so the question is, how much guidance do you want to give them slash how much flexibility?
Right. So again, that horse here, but I, I totally get it on larger parcels, because there's plenty of space for. For views to be protected and, and, you know, the transition, it's, it goes back to the concern for that smaller one that. I don't, I think that puts an unfair burden on, on the DRB and it's too limiting. It's, it's not strong enough for the landowner who may have a very good intention to. Build a village of tiny homes in their. In their backyard. That could be a fantastic thing for the community.
Yeah, I, I feel like that's where that comes in, because if somebody is going to create. Tiny homes, you know, they're probably not going to be as much of an impact on. A neighbor who has a two-acre parcel, which was your example.
No, no, it depends on.
The neighbor.
And it, I mean, no, it depends on where it is and it, because there are also a lot of. Par, parcels like that that don't use, oh gosh, sorry, fencing and gates and all of this and it's kind of. Has a sense of being a shared area. If you, if you look at the map and look at where these parcels are, I don't even know how many of them there are, is it worth it? Because I do think that.
So I guess just to get back to the point, are you concerned that four dwelling units per acre is. An unacceptably large amount of development to be next to an adjoining property?
I just think we need to decide if that's what, I mean. I, I, I feel that there are great opportunities for this to happen. Absolutely. It could be a very good thing. But I do think it's a very strong statement. And we either need to create something that we can fully stand behind and say, yes. Your neighbors have the right to do this because it meets important city goals. You're, you know, a walk from. This, you're a walk from that. It's important that, that people that want to. Create small neighborhoods here, we feel very strongly they should have the right to do it, period. And we're going to give them the tools. To enable that. They will be. They will be challenged. And so my point is, why create something? That we're, that we're just setting people up to be, without giving them the, the. To me, it's a more strategic question. Strategically, in certain area, sure, absolutely. I don't think four acres. Uh, is, you've seen things that I've shared from other parts of the, I've seen infill happen very, very successfully. And. I definitely think it's a very good conversation for us to have. So I'm not opposed to that kind of number, but I'm just saying, as this is written right now, it's not only saying four, it's saying or greater. Whichever is greater. So it. It's giving, it, this, the way this is written, it is giving very strong permission, no matter the underlying zoning. For someone to want to do an infill PUD, which of course, maybe we'll say on September 5th or 14th, except you can't do it here.
Yeah, I guess, actually, this is a really good point. So this would only apply in the areas where we put on the map. That the TND is acceptable. So, so that is part of the discussion. We are going to have a map. Where we've said, TND is acceptable and another map that says NCD is acceptable in these areas. You know, so, and you know, we had made, you know, two years ago, a draft map of that, but we're going to kind of revisit that. So like this 3A that it sounds like you're concerned about, like we are going to be having that conversation of. Is a TND acceptable in this area? And then in the case where the lot or the buildable areas is so small that it wouldn't. Be able to have kind of the full. Regulations apply, then, then this would apply, but we would have already said. And it's shown on the map that TND is acceptable in this area. You know, so, so I think that that is a conversation and.
Okay. And so maybe. The, maybe my worries about the smaller is that if we were to. Address, address where it can be allowed right now, if say there are areas that we do not allow right now. I still would like to revisit it later and say, well, how can we? How can we encourage? Do we want these different regions that are now, you know, our ones? Do we? Do we not have our ones anymore? Or do we allow infill on our ones? I think we need to have that conversation, because there are plenty of areas where there can be. Amazing neighborhoods built that are not competing with natural resources. But I don't, I, that's the part I think is not for now. So, okay. So maybe it's a tiny thing.
Um, I do, you know, I, I, I think just going back to the beginning of this whole project. One of the goals of the planning commission was, you were seeing in areas where you are comfortable with neighborhoods being built. You were seeing um, neighborhoods of five or six acres being built with. The number that just slides just under Act 250, nine house, nine houses. And so the problem statement that you presented at the time was, oh my gosh, you know, the entirety of those five or six acres are being built on. Um, with these lots that can't easily in the future become more than what they are. That seems like a really inefficient use of land. It's not, it's, it's using all the land, but it's, we're only getting nine units out of. Five acres or six acres. How do we solve that? So that's part, this is a tool for that. But it's totally appropriate to figure out where, where that's okay and where you don't want to do.
Um, so it seems like in general, we've been talking about um, kind of the applicability. Kind of the differences between this and a traditional subdivision or some of the other PUD types. I guess I'm wondering if there's some kind of specific things we could address. That might make people more comfortable with moving forward with, with this as one of our tools. Or if kind of the, a large part of the group is just generally uncomfortable. You know, I know Monica expressed some concerns, but you know, it's hard for me to tell kind of.
Sort of broadly, Michael's feedback to sort of make that off. So. Michael had some specific feedback that he provided in writing, um, broadly characterizing it. He, um, I think generally liked it. He felt that there should be additional. Allowances for flexibility to, um, you know, more height, more just design flexibility. He wanted to make sure that there's a way that TDRs as a receiving area, say along Shelburne Road can be integrated in. And he. Felt that. There were a couple of questions that Sharon had about, you know, if we're going to have more compact areas along Shelburne Road, should we prohibit? Things like drive-throughs? He said, yes, absolutely. And.
I'm sorry, wait, what? What a drive, like restaurant drive-throughs?
In the rare circumstances that we allow them today in our current regulations. Sharon, one of her question was, if you're going to be an infill PUD along Shelburne Road, should that just prohibit the drive-throughs? Because they don't really work in a very compact setting.
Okay, okay.
I, I don't, I don't want to sidetrack a, a very small piece of the conversation, but um. And then I think his last one, which maybe speaks back to the conservation PD and the subject of natural resources was. He um, feels that it should be limited to parcels that have 25% or less. Of all the natural resources that you have been talking about. On hazards, level one, level two, prime ax oils, et cetera. Um, I should say that in terms of drive-throughs, um, we largely prohibit them already in the city. They're only allowed for. Banks. And in rare circumstances in city center, if you've met a whole bunch of design stuff. I think those are the only circumstances where we currently allow them. Those are, they do, but they're, um, they're pre-existing. So if they, if there was a new one coming in tomorrow, they could not have one. That's why it's a walk-up window on Shaw, on Williston Road.
Walk through.
Like owls, kind of.
But so now that you've talked about the Shelburne Road piece, because we did talk about, I know this gets back to the. Well, I don't know, we talked about maybe the auto area on Shelburne Road having some opportunity for. Multi-use instead of auto, which might be an infill PUD. I don't know where this would fit and it may be specific to that area, but it does seem that if there is infill built on. Either Shelburne Road or Williston Road, but maybe just more so Shelburne Road because it is Route 7. That it needs to have um, more distance from the road to ensure the. And, and, you know, noise mitigation. We'd need to, it would be great to include noise mitigation on.
Even if you're talking about a commercial one?
No, I was saying if we do, well, if we do mixed use. Like there's. So I don't know if that fits into this. Is that a different conversation?
I think if we're going to start to go down the path of looking at sort of sound levels within buildings, that's. I think if we're going to start to go down the path of looking at sort of sound levels within buildings, that's a that's, that's an area we haven't touched yet. Um, that I'm, I can't say that I can speak intelligently to what current design codes do or don't say about that.
Well, I think we should because we're talking about infill and building much more densely in small areas. And and I can, I mean, we talked before about the buildings on Shelburne Road that, you know, there's the one new apartment. Is it the Lark? No, there's a new building that's set back quite a ways. And they have a great view, but they also have a great distance from the road. And I know that someone lived there and had a very good experience. I know someone that lived above and the apartment across from the McDonald's on Shelburne Road, and they lasted like two months. And they lost, they took their lease away because they they quit their lease because it was so they could not sleep. And this is a beautiful apartment. So my point is if we're talking about infill and building more densely and this becoming something that a PUD that could be a good fit for Shelburne Road, I do think we need to be versed on noise mitigation elements. And and it can be as simple as just a barrier from the street, you know?
I don't discount that it's an important subject, but it's not something that we're easily going to be able to address in a handful of weeks.
This is my concern with.
As you make your decisions about what to move forward with and and what not to, I think realistically, we we won't be versed in this in the next six weeks. That said, I understand that it's an important subject.
We could revisit it under building standards.
So Jessica, what what do you need from us? You would like to hear whether we're comfortable with this?
Yeah, I guess so. You know, if people have, you know, Paul just kind of read off some of Michael's kind of tweaks or comments. Like, I guess if other people have things that they're concerned about, you know, now that we kind of talk through the idea and how it works.
Right, so a few of the things I've heard so far were the idea of matching the existing context might not work if it's not the context that you're really looking at. Monica shared some questions and concerns about whether two to four acres in a residential context. Is it necessary? What purpose does it serve in the short term?
I I'm, I'm not, I mean, I'm less concerned about that because we'll be more, it sounds like my issues will be more addressed during the September 14th.
That some of the density issues around how much flexibility that is given, how much the DRB can modify things. Michael did not, I I said he was a fan of additional flexibility, but I think he, that's really on the built environment side. He was less excited about flexibility on allowing nearby civic space to count things like that, so.
Generally, I like, I mean, from page five on, I think the DRB is going to have some challenges because there's a lot of, you know, wording that might even be interpretive. But yeah, from my perspective, it's, you know, again, the compatibility. I get some other words that I had circled, but I do like the part about the rhythm.
This is a very hard PUD type because by definition, it's about fitting into something that already exists around it.
Yeah.
And so I I acknowledge that that's inherently, that's a problem for the DRB.
Yeah, yeah.
Or it's a problem for anybody involved with it.
Right.
See, and Paul, like I would point out on page, section D, building placement and orientation, I mean, on page 12 of the packet, I mean, right here, we're saying D, section four, orient the primary building, including terraces and porches on the street. And I would say instead, no, orient the building to give the most privacy and most, you know, best viewscape, the views on the back of the building, you know, if you're on Shelburne Road on the west side. Like, why should we be forcing a building to put its primary, I know because it looks nice when you're driving by, but this is a highway. We're like New Jersey. People just want to get off of Shelburne Road. Why not, why not give people the chance to build something there that that optimizes privacy and and, you know, noise mitigation rather than just saying face Shelburne Road, you know, that's why, so I don't know if it's specific.
Yeah, I I understand the the question, but I think that's a larger conversation because
This is my worry.
Two years ago, you put in the urban design overlay that specifically asked for buildings to be near the street with a door to the street on Shelburne Road with the idea of over time changing that character that it has now.
Well, but when we, and we have since seen buildings come in, and now we have results and knowledge to learn from. And we also know that Shelburne Road, we can't control, we know that, so we can't, we can't change it. And if we have an opportunity, especially with some of those larger parcels down there, if we do have the opportunity to use something like this in those auto, those are deep parcels with gorgeous views on the back. I mean, we have some really cool opportunities down there. And we have learned since we put some of those regs out. So it could be as simple as just getting rid of Port 4 and but I, it, we're. If if this is to apply, I I don't know how soon, we haven't talked about zoning changes, and that is zoned right now for auto, right? So maybe this doesn't matter because if we're not going to change the auto zoning, it doesn't matter right now. Those are the largest parcels, but even, no, I guess the.
Well, so this is really similar to all the work that was done as part of the Form Based Code, you know, to really bring the building to the front and face the street. And and language like this does already apply on Williston Road. It's just that we don't have Form Based Code over on Shelburne Road. I know you're very focused on Shelburne Road right now, but.
Well, but we have control over Williston Road. We can put a median there if we wanted to. It's not a state. Seven is a highway. We don't have any control. I know, but I I think that we have more, don't we have more flexibility on Route 2?
I think they're the same designation.
No, uh, we are the, we are the owners of Williston Road. Because it is a state highway and a federal number, we don't have, we don't have, we have to do a lot of consultation. Shelburne Road is entirely owned by the state.
It's its own beast.
That said, it is there, it is theirs to control. That said, as the character of of a state highway changes, they have responsibility to be looking to modify. So it's a little bit of a, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a, how do I describe it? It's a, it's iterative.
Yes.
You know, if we only said all we ever want on there is car dealerships, not to pick on those car dealerships, then a, a, a road design for getting through will be the priority.
Right.
If, you know, fast forward 40 years, it is a more urban environment, then over time, that will need to reflect that change as, you know, you've seen even just this summer upgrade of the pedestrian cycles and that kind of thing in that area. Just to interrupt for a second, Joe Larkin is here and he said he's happy to comment on the 1185 Shelburne Road building, um, which is the Larkin Parish building, if you want to hear from him.
Sure, go ahead, Joe.
Well, thanks all, um, you know, I, this seemed relevant and I I'm on listening, so if, you know, I I do understand the noise complaints. We have had some, but I would say the vast majority of our residents in the building have been very happy. So while, you know, and this is our, it's one of those things where we do get a lot of feedback and we try to make sense of it and want to make best business decisions we can, I don't think noise is, um, you know, at a level that we wouldn't do that building again, and that's just feedback from the marketplace. So, um, you know, I'll let the the planners and designers do what they do and but I just wanted to comment that it's not an overwhelming problem for us. I think each building product and each building type has a different end user, and this one's been very successful. And and, you know, we're able to access a lower price point on some of those units, and that's, that's okay too. The other product that was mentioned, well, I I understand. You know, listen, everybody wants more privacy, everyone wants more space, but that's not always an option. And design wise, when we're able to get towards the road, we're able to get more units in and more density and all those things are probably a net positive. So I think that's just one opinion, and I just thought I should mention it.
I appreciate that, Joe. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Joe, that's a beautiful building. Really appreciate that.
I mean, think about if if all the buildings on Sheldon Road look like Joel Arken's building.
Yeah.
A different feel that that road would have.
Change Shelburne.
That's, that's what we want.
The credit you need, yeah.
Okay, um, so Ted, I think you were still going through some of your comments.
No, I I'm pretty well through. I I was just reinforcing that I thought really from, you know, five on, it mentioned that there was some nebulous language, but I don't know how to change it and defer to the DRB to hopefully, in their best judgment, make sure that the the development is sort of incompatible with the neighborhood. So like, I'm, you know, positive in regard what what's been written in here.
Great. Anyone else have comments or?
I just want to reiterate my comment about not having infill applied to natural, natural space, natural areas. If we can take that, I'd be happy with it.
I would echo what Paul said. I'm fairly comfortable with it, but I think they're really the devils in the details when we look about where the context or where the applicability is. I I agree with you, but I think, I think mainly is the built environment.
Yeah.
Repurposing the built environment as opposed to, yeah.
Yeah. Infill's infill. I mean, that's what it is.
But I suppose that that comes down to the decision, the conversation we'll have about applicability.
Well, and also whether you can use it within a conservation PUD. Because whether it's this one or a TND, it would be going into the buildable area of a conservation PUD. Just, I'm not saying one way or the other, but we have been talking about that in reference to that, so.
Right, so those are all options on the table for you to 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 think about, and we'll try to map it out in a way that is clear and logical and helps facilitate that conversation to figure out when, under what circumstances it makes sense to do this and which ones just feels like not, not appropriate.
So, but I'm sorry.
Oh, Duncan, I think had another comment.
No, I mean, I I I think this is, I just think it's, it's a good tool to have in the chest. And I think if we could flesh it out, I think it would be good to have. But I agree, there's still some issues that might need to be dealt with, but hopefully we might be able to look at those a little bit later.
Quick question, you know, a neighborhood like Mayfair Park. Now, that would, there could be an accessory building in the backyard, right, the question, I assume, but not really an infill per se, or.
Well, those are quarter acre.
You know where Mayfair Park is?
Yeah, but those aren't, those are like quarter acre parcels, so that would.
Right, I think for the most part, this PUD tool would not apply to a place like that. And we had a comment from a member of the public earlier about Kirby Cottage. Kirby Cottage is actually on something like 1.5 acres. So that would be smaller than what a PUD can be. You could, as a add-on tool, as I was mentioning with the Form Based Code, you could say a cottage court can be done separately from a PUD. It doesn't have to be a PUD. You can just say cottage court is allowed on parcels of up to X size to encourage, if you want to, that kind of infill if there happens to be a three-quarter or a parcel on in Mayfair Park. Or not.
I mean, the other thing that is a possibility is that one person could buy four back-to-back lots or for I'm asking, I guess, would, could one person buy four connected lots or could four families get together? And say, we'd actually like to consolidate this to get to the required minimum. And we, the four of us, would like to tear our houses down and build this. So this would, so.
And then they, they get stuck to the context around them. And in all the standards that you're just reading in there, plus obviously the housing preservation standards. So they, if they tore down four, they'd have to put at least four back.
Right. So to that point, that's how it would, it could happen in a place like Mayfair Park if enough people. I mean, what are the chances of that? But technically, they would be.
If that's allowed in that district.
If, if, right, if after September 14th, we recommend that it's allowed in that district, yeah.
I was going to say, we haven't heard much from the public. I haven't really actually given any chance. So I don't know if anyone, Donna, I see you just put your hand up. So I don't know if you want to come up to the microphone and then if anyone else in the virtual audience has questions.
There's some stuff in the chat. You said we're not.
Okay, go ahead, Donna.
Yeah, Donna Leben, just had a question regarding sort of the, you know, matching the existing context. And, you know, I have a real concern of neighborhoods that are, you know, basically ranch-style houses. And I've, you know, I've had friends, I have friends who own ranch houses and, you know, we've talked a lot about how, how do you, how do you add a unit to this? You know, how do you, how do you, you know, make this one unit into two units? And there's just a real difficulty of anything that's one story on a certain width lot that basically just, you know, everything's built to setbacks and everything. So my concern is that, you know, if you're kind of, you know, wanting to match an existing context, that that's a, that's a particularly difficult kind of housing type. You know, that you you shouldn't want to match that because the density of that doesn't really allow you to go where you want to go. So and that's really a question more than anything. It's like, you know, is there an exception to some of the contextual obligations when you're building something in a, you know, on a street that's largely all ranch-style houses? Because they're, they're just, they're just very difficult to renovate, you know, you, you know, people will probably tear them down rather than renovate them because they're just a very hard housing type to work with unless you have a deep enough lot and enough side yard that you could build behind it. You know, but a lot of those lots just don't give you much room.
Right, and and I think that that's, that's, it's a good, it's a good point, Donna, and I think that that's the threshold question. Because the solutions to the problems that you're raising are probably not at the PUD level. They're probably at looking at the zoning district itself and saying, if somebody has a parcel with a 75-year-old or 50-year-old raised ranch and wants to do something a little bit different with that property, put two or three homes in it in a way that is context sensitive.
Do it on one lot.
That's probably not at the level of a PUD. That's probably looking at the zoning and saying, well, what if it was one building that had a small-sized triplex that looked like a single-family home?
Right.
You know, uh, something like the Habitat for Humanity building that looks like a duplex, it's a fourplex. That's allowed in the Form Based Code district. I think that that's probably a separate project from the PUDs if we're down at that scale. Not to say it's not important, but just sort of separating out what are you trying to accomplish in the next few weeks? And what are problems that are great challenges to look at afterwards?
Yeah, so and and you mentioned that four units per acre is kind of a, a maximum. Unless, unless there's another district that allows greater than that, is it typically the, the higher limit of housing density?
It says minimum.
Minimum?
It was, it was minimum of four, for it's the minimum of four or whatever the maximum, the underlying, whichever is greater.
Yeah.
As the minimum.
As the minimum, as the minimum.
Yeah.
Right, and remember, that's net. So that's not, that's not the gross, that's after you've done your allocations, you've taken out your civic space, et cetera. So in practice, it's not like a huge upzoning in most cases from what it is today.
And and just a general question, is there any allowance for increases in density? If someone perhaps adds an efficiency apartment? Mainly because of affordability issues? Is, you know, to to try to build affordable units into something like that, you know, they, they're not going to be the same size. And they may not have all the same amenities like onsite parking and things like that. But are you giving some density allowances to increase the likelihood of people building affordable units?
There are some allowances through the inclusionary zoning provisions. And accessory apartments are, don't count towards density. So that's another
Okay.
Tool in the toolbox, and the state has opened those up more broadly in the last 12 months. Beyond that, I'd say that is another one that falls in the category of could you look at the underlying zoning districts and look at how you incentivize other things? But again, I think that that's probably a follow-on project.
Okay, so, well, but. And so in a PUD, you're saying every. Okay, so, well, so in a PUD, you're saying every unit could have an accessory unit?
In the state of Vermont, any single-family home on its own property is allowed to have a accessory dwelling unit by right.
Okay, so that doesn't include PUDs then because they're not separate?
If it's on its own lot. So within a PUD, properties can, houses can be on their own lots.
Okay.
They are all allowed to have an accessory apartment that meets certain qualifications.
Okay, okay, that clarifies that. Thank you.
Good. Thanks, Donna. I heard Sandy Julie has a question. Go ahead.
Sandy, would you prefer that I summarize your notes that you put in writing or do you want, would you like to speak yourself?
That's fine with me for you to summarize. The one that I was especially interested in is the focus on strengthening or redeveloping neighborhoods, preserving neighborhoods and, and infill, or what is that redevelopment PUD?
So Sandy's comment was, what is especially important, in her opinion, in the traditional neighborhood and the neighborhood conservation, neighborhood commercial PUD is the focus of the regulations on promoting the development of strong neighborhoods. How did the draft infill development PUDs preserve, promote the preservation or redevelopment of strong neighborhoods? That, that's what Sandy was wanting to make sure that that's what carries through in this. She had a couple of other comments around, she supported the idea of prohibiting drive-throughs and wanted to note, as I mentioned a few minutes ago, that Kirby Cottage is actually below the threshold of a PUD today.
Yeah, I'm just looking, like, it seems like in the characteristics right up front where we're defining the characteristics of this kind of PUD, it does talk about a tribute to neighborhood revitalization by introducing new housing types within or existing, to an existing residential neighborhood that are compatible with neighborhood character, but which offer more housing types. So it's like that might get to that preserving strong neighborhoods point. And then I guess.
Which page is that on?
It's right up front. It's on page
Page one.
One.
Ah, okay, thank you.
And then, you know, obviously there's then further down specific standards that try to achieve that characteristic. You know, a lot of the discussion about the rhythm and the context, I think, are trying to kind of get at that point.
And I think we're, I mean.
Thank you.
Yeah.
To mention before, in Burlington, when I lived there, so many, and I think Paul, you did refer that, for this, that you had a building, but then suddenly there was a 10-unit complex that was attached to that building. Now, that would be incompatible for a neighborhood, I assume, in our context. Because it doesn't enhance the neighborhood necessarily. It turns a residential area into apartments.
If, I would say in most cases, that's probably the case, yes. There may be occasionally a circumstance along, you know, a portion of Williston Road where that actually fits in with being near Kinney's or something, but yes, that's correct.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah. And I think that, yeah, that, that specific example of having 10 or so would probably be more than, more units than the TND even itself allows. And so.
Yeah.
Um, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Have you know other towns or cities use PUDs in Vermont?
Yes, there are a number of them, and I can, I don't have them off the top of my head. I can, the ones I'm thinking of are more rural, which is, you know, it's informative, but it's not necessarily useful to this exact conversation. I know that the Warren Waitsfield and Bayston use them very successfully in a rural context, but let me think about some more.
In Chittman County, Williston.
Uh, Williston does, I'm fairly certain that Heinsburg has it for their, for their village areas, but rather than speculate off the top of my head, let me do a quick poll of our neighboring communities and ask them, you know, who's liking what they've got. I know Essex is in the process of doing almost the exact same thing that we're doing right now with the same people. So, wrestling with the same challenges.
So just before we went to the public, I had one more comment. So look, I'm putting up, trying to put up a lot of hurdles, and I'm not, it's on my intention tonight, but regarding that Section D of the building placement orientation. I, am I the, can I ask for a straw poll or is there, I would like to, that was that page 12. It's the Section Three Design Standards, D, Building Placement and Orientation. Maybe it's like an overlay or something.
Of the packet.
Twelve of the packet. Sorry. So it's building placement orientation is Section D. And it's that one again that's talking about the primary buildings facing the street. I know that we passed the Shelburne Corridor. I get all of that. But with this, with this PUD, am I, am I alone in being concerned about this section as it pertains to infill, which would include residential along Shelburne Road? Am I alone in that or are there others who are interested in continuing the conversation there? Because I didn't hear that in the summary, and I just want to make, if I'm alone, then.
But isn't there a caveat at the end of that paragraph? It says, or shared courtyard or civic space that is directly accessible from the street.
So I don't know, does it?
To me, that reads that it doesn't have to face the street. It can also face the shared courtyard or civic space. Am I reading that wrong?
That is directly accessible from the street. I.
Right. So if you were to design, uh, for example, portions of South Village, the units face into a courtyard, and that courtyard is directly accessible from the street. So you can walk up to somebody's front door through the green space. That's a, that's a sort of a residential version of it. A, I'm trying to think of an example of a commercial one. We don't have a ton of them in this area, but you could put a parklet at the front and then organize yourself around it.
But if somebody wanted to do strictly residential, I guess it's, it's, it's almost more encouraging that, you know, and I'll give you another example, the Hannaford down by the Lowes. Right? Like if we, if, if they all had to just face the street, all of those apartments would be, their primary would be facing the Lowes where right to the west are the mountains and the lake and be in a fantastic place.
Are you mostly concerned about the porches and terraces or are you concerned? Because I mean, all, we've been talking for years about main entrances, doors, windows, like having a street presence. Like, I don't think we want to just have a blank wall facing the street.
Right. So I don't know what it would be.
Your concern is.
My, my concern is noise and privacy. And if we're going to be building housing there, like give opportunities for people, especially these parcels on Shelburne Road are deep and they happen to be right next to one of the most beautiful views in the world. So to me, it's, it, the, the, like, when we get above Allen, or even above, when we get towards like above Imperial, yeah, that's already, that's, and that is the start. The Larkin Building is the start of that. That's kind of the cornerstone that really brings us into like the condensed, you know, but when we're farther south, where these infill PUDs can go, those are deep parcels that can have a very different effect to them. And I guess I'm, I'm asking if we're going to put, if, if the, if the infill is the one PUD that these would be able to tap into, I do not agree with the street-facing presence and, and connection in that area. And I would ask that we reconsider and, and discourage buildings from being right there when they have the property to do something else.
We have sort of something similar in Heinsburg Road. I think some of the newer buildings there, we've, we've created a front door facade, and it's attractive, I suppose, but in some ways for the poor landowner, not very functional because everyone accesses it through the side or behind, again, near the right property. But it is an aesthetically appealing. But, but I guess the question is along Shelburne Road, Duncan had just mentioned, or someone said to you, you didn't, not just at the back, but there has to be, I think, some kind of visual integrity along Shelburne Road. Or are you suggesting the building has to be set significantly back?
I would think that a, a grove of trees would be a very pleasing sight when you're driving down Shelburne Road. You know, I mean, a grove of trees that prevents, that provide shade and the sound barrier and trees and shrubs. So that what you see is that, like you see in other parts of Vermont, you know, and then, because the, because the parcels are deep enough.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know what it is, and I.
I guess, I guess what I'd say is if, if the commission wants to engage in that, that's perfectly fine. But that, that's larger than just the PUDs because you, you did, you know, you have enacted an urban design overlay that very specifically says buildings should be up towards the street. They should be oriented to the street and, and you reduce the setbacks down to something like 15 feet to promote things like the Larkin Terrace. So if, if you want to engage in that, that's perfectly fine, but I think it can't just be in the PUDs because you've got, your site plan standards are specifically calling for an urban form.
But that overlay district doesn't go all the way down to the auto district.
It's, it's the entirety of Shelburne Road.
Oh, I thought I didn't do, maybe, maybe we weren't concerned about the auto because auto was zoned as auto. But now we're talking about a potential zone change. So to me, that with infill that can include, and we're talking about trying to send TDRs from the SEQ elsewhere. It, it does feel relevant.
Let's, so we've actually talked about this quite a bit already, and we actually heard that some people were in favor of leaving it the way it is. So let's do an actual straw poll. So this, so everyone know where we are, we're on this D5 about orienting the buildings towards the street. So there's the language that's in there now that's specific about orienting towards the street. Who is in favor of leaving that language the way it is? So it would be as written. Then who would be in favor of removing that language? Okay, anyone abstain?
And again, the reason I'm not, against Robert's rules, I think you have to vote if you're at the meeting, but anyway. You know, I agree with Monica. From an aesthetic standpoint, it would be nice to have some greenery as opposed to these wall of buildings. It is contrary to Form-Based Code because we said buildings up. But, so I'm, I'm really torn because I, I do like the idea setting back maybe a little bit more than having greenery. So, you know, maybe at another discussion, again, you had mentioned that the autos are not going to change for a while, so we have time to, to consider that.
I mean, do we know? We don't know. Once this infill is, I mean, I get it, I'm minority, but the, once the infill PUD is approved and accepted, if it is, by all means, somebody who currently owns an auto dealership can say, you know what, I'm going to change course.
Right, but that can happen today too. Because even the, the C1 Auto District is only auto in that it's like all the rest of Shelburne Road that allows residential and commercial, and it allows cars.
Okay, so more to the point, it is available now. Not that it, not that any of them are rushing to close down, but it is possible.
I would say, and you already voted on this, but this is intended for all contexts of, of PUDs, of infill PUDs. So it's also about making sure that if something like a larger property on Kirby Road shows up, that you're creating a, you're not having sort of a haphazard, oh, we're just going to put six units in the back and ignore the context of what's around it. So it's really, these are tended to be, you know, the standard is, is the text at the top, maintain or establish a consistent building orientation to the street where, and where a prevalent pattern exists. It's, it's again, trying to reflect the pattern of development.
And you're really talking about almost an IDX kind of idea. I mean, that's significantly set back, but there is a park, there are ducks in a pond and mitigation pond, but, so there is, but that's a whole different.
Which this would not.
The whole idea of all of this is to build community. I mean, that's the reason to put the buildings up and have individual entrances. I mean, that whole area behind Shaw's next to where I am. You know, those, there's not one of those units that's accessible to the outside. Everything is one entrance, hallways, hallways, hallways. There's no stoops, there's no, throughout the entire complex. And that is the antithesis of community, it is. Community is the old way of doing it, actually, which is houses that have front steps and, you know, neighbors and people relate to one another, you know? That's the idea, is to have that and to bring that back.
Yeah, and I, I think that's, that's a great point, Paul. And when we look at a place like Joe Larkin was speaking about Larkin Terrace, the way that they've done it is they've got, you know, a commercial presence towards the street, and then over time, they're trying to build that sense of community, to your point, Monica, oriented to where it's not right up on Shelburne Road. But you can get both in that context, you know? Wouldn't necessarily make sense to have residential stoops right on Shelburne Road, but they can do an, an interior complex that could do that very well on some streets on the, on the interior of that. That would be a lot like.
And it's also to put the squeeze on the automobile too, you know, I mean, it's a, you know, people are not going to continue to race down Shelburne Road if there's kids playing in the front yard, you know?
Well, to that point, if the building is where Joe Larkin's is versus where IDX is, what's the difference in the speed people are going to go? And I think we, we talked about that when we did the nodes on Shelburne Road about trying to create a kind of a gateway to the community, but also not have it be just a highway.
And, and I think a good example of that is on Heinsburg Road just south of Kennedy Drive. There's been infill on both sides of the street there, in front of the senior housing, there's some six-plexes and then across the street. You know, those were intentionally brought, they're not right up against the street, but they're much closer than they used to be. I think it's starting to have a feel, and, you know, the city council asked the Etrans to say, hey, once you're, once you're north of Tillie Drive, it's starting to feel like a different place. You're supposed to try to start to go a little bit slower. And, you know, it takes both, you know, it takes speed limits, but it also takes a context where frankly, somebody feels that they want to drive more slowly.
The worst of it all was the error of the shopping plaza with the parking lot in front and the building set way back. When the buildings could have been in front and the parking could have been in back, you know?
Paul, I need you in some of our developers meetings because I still need to hear that.
Old habits die hard, Paul.
Well, you know, it is after nine. Does anyone have anything else on the infill PUDs or? Okay.
So for next week, and let me jump ahead because I know you're talking about conservation PUDs. Sharon's not going to be, she's out of town, and I guess I'm she must have had either trouble connecting or I misconnected on whether she was out of town starting today or tomorrow. My hope would be to bring back the, or my expectations to bring back the three that you've been talking about. The TND, which you saw in the spring, the conservation PUD, this one, see what, see what remaining questions you have about them. So that'll be on 8/31. Sharon is still working on the neighborhood commercial. She may have that also, but I'm not making promises. Your following meeting is when I want to bring all the other stuff, the ancillary changes to the regulations. Bring all that stuff to you. I may start that next week, but that's, that's my goal in the next two meetings with you guys. And, you know, looking for thumbs up, thumbs down on the ancillary stuff. What I'm doing is I'm taking the memo that I gave you back in December, so January, updating it and giving my feedback of like, this one has to be done in order to legally work. This one looks ready to go, but if you're not comfortable with it, you can just give a thumbs down and say, nope, let's save it for later, so that you can make relatively quick decisions, so that you can hit your deadline.
Okay. Well, it sounds like we're going to. Okay, um well, it sounds like we're gonna have this infill and the conservation PUD back on the agenda, you know, collectively next meeting. So does anyone have anything that you really want to talk about on the conservation PUD now or? The conservation PUD, do you have anything you wanted to bring up now or um, you know, we can wait till our next meeting?
Well, I bought up the issue last time about uh they've required versus elective. And I guess that's gonna be part of the discussion on November fourteenth.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, and I think you had another point or two in your email that we didn't get to. That I think can be on our next.
Yeah, I'd love to at your next meeting, Paul, you had a comment in your, in your feedback about the carve out. I think that one would be a really good one to talk about next week because Sharon created this carve out of the conservation PUD based on, she was hearing commissioners say, well, what if so and so just wants to cut out one or two parcels from their larger one. Um, that can be, I, I'd love to have that conversation with you next week about whether you want to keep that or don't. She wrote it only because that was what she was hearing from you. Um but if you don't want to have it, there's no requirement to do that, or if you want to modify it.
Have we clarified the TDR issues? I mean, we, we're sort of entering that with regard to inclusionary zoning and that there might have, it might be a clash of of that.
I, I think I've got it fairly tidied, but I owe it to you in a way that you can repeat it in a, in a less than three-story elevator.
And can I ask, um if, we don't have to do this tonight, but would it be helpful to Sharon if we did this tonight? So Paul's um comment about not wanting to have infill PUDs in unbuildable, unbuilt spaces, right? And that that would therefore include potentially conservation PUDs within the buildable area. Would it be helpful to do a straw poll on that right now? Cause I heard very strongly and I, I hear what you're saying. If we all agree with that, then Sharon should probably know that because that means within the conservation PUD thirty percent, it's only working, it's only allowing the underlying zoning. It's not allowing the alternate PUD to fit in there. That's a direction that I think could be beneficial. Whereas if we don't, a majority agree, then we don't. But am I overthinking that? Is that?
No, thanks. I appreciate that. I was gonna suggest the same.
So go again.
Well, I, I'm just not sure where, we heard clearly Paul's comment that, that in an infill PUD and I'm not sure if that therefore mean, well, an infill PUD would be, would not be permitted on a, a parcel that has not previously been built on. Is that a fair way to say it? Do, do we, is there agreement, general agreement on that? Or so should we do a straw poll? Because that seems to be pretty direction, strategic direction for, for Sharon.
Um before we take a straw poll, let me just sort of raise that I think that there's two contexts that you're talking about. Um or maybe it is just one, but one is it's a small parcel that is undeveloped, as Paul is talking about. Another one is it's a larger parcel that is a conservation PUD. They're conserving seventy percent of it.
Right.
In the area that you are allowing to be built one way or another.
Yeah.
Do you allow for this very compact TND as a way to get more housing in the area that you have already decided you're okay with development.
Right, exactly.
So I think that those are two separate questions.
Right.
Because in the conservation PUD version, you need a minimum of four acres of buildable land. Which means that that can only be thirty percent of your property. You're already talking about a property that's like eighteen acres minimum to apply. So you're not talking about like a little tiny parcel.
You have to be eighteen acres to have a conservation beauty?
To have, in order to do the TND within a conservation PUD, the buildable area needs to be four acres.
But so, but we, it can't be an infill PUD then at two acres?
Not the way it's drafted. Therefore, in order, that can only be thirty percent of the property. Therefore, your property is whatever the math is. It's too late for me to work out the math, twelve, fourteen acres. I'm just saying that there's different contexts where one is about, are you allowing development? And the other one is, you've already designated that thirty percent. Would you be okay with a very compact little neighborhood in the thirty percent that you've allowed for development?
Right. So I don't know if it's premature to have this kind of straw poll. And, and, and I don't necessarily agree, Paul, with you. So my pushing it is not, I, I don't, I'm not, I don't know how this would come out. Cause I, I would, I didn't realize you I don't know, I didn't understand that you couldn't use an infill PUD on a conservation PUD. I thought that's what we were just talking about. So I forgot about the four acre minimum. Okay.
Remember, the infill PUD type applies between four and ten acres of buildable land.
Oh, I see. Okay. So you can still use it on the four acres.
I guess my suggestion would be, it feels like it's getting late to have a straw poll on something that we're sort of nesting conversation and conversation. I don't know if anybody else feels a little bit tired and confused.
I mean, I agree with Monica that, that we should, you know, send some direction to Sharon.
I guess my question would be, what in the context of undeveloped, I mean, how are we defining that? Is it just, you know, the house is here, the field's here, that's undeveloped? And what do we? I guess maybe some clarity on that. When we say undeveloped, what do we?
I mean, for me, it's, it just seems simple, you know, it's either developed or it's not developed. If it's if it's been developed and it's being redeveloped, then it's infill. And if it's open property, if it's natural property, then it's not.
I'm just trying to clarify, if the entire parcel has no building on it, then that would be a no-go. If there is a building on it, it's only, you know, that is, that's all right.
See, that, that's where, that's where I'm gonna.
So maybe it is too early because we all just need to hear this, but I think it's worthy of unless, unless you think this is very helpful to give Sharon direction on tonight, otherwise maybe it's something we need to just keep.
I think it's okay because it's either just deleting a section or not. Um, the question that I would pose back is if you choose to say that an infill PUD doesn't work on a greenfield area, that's, that's fine. Then you'd say um a, a PUD only is applicable at, say, ten acres then. In that circumstance, under ten acres, you would fall back to the regular zoning. So you'd get the subdivision rules, unless you're thinking about changing the zoning altogether to not allow development. You understand what I'm saying? Like the, the PUD is really about the type of development, the, the infill, the infill PUD, it's is it gonna be a subdivision and a standard development or is it gonna be a PUD type development?
But a TND can start at four acres.
Well, but Paul is proposing that an infill PUD not be allowed on a greenfield area. Therefore, it would not be able to start at four acres because four to ten acres is an infill TND. So Paul is, I think, proposing to say four to ten acres, if it's a greenfield, can't be a TND.
Because a TND would have to start at ten acres.
Cause it's an infill TND. I think that's what they'd be basically prohibiting a.
We're chasing our tail here.
Yeah.
A little something, yeah.
So I think it might be better to talk about it all in context, like of where things apply on the map and like what those thresholds of the acres are and then which tools are.
I think I'd, I'd like to try to give you like a, a simple like chart in front of you that says, here's how it looks now. And then you can X it out and say, no, this is not what we wanted. This is what we did, like something graphical, because I think it's, I'm personally really struggling with. And describing this in words.
See, I just think it's uncomplicated, you know, if it's, if it's a natural area, then it can't possibly be infill by definition.
I think it's the word infill that maybe, it's called.
It's the other word that's.
Mini, mini TND.
Yeah.
These are not small pieces of land. I mean, two acres is quite a bit of property, actually, you know? If you look at a two acre lot, it's a pretty good sized lot. And that's what you're gonna have. You're gonna have lots, basically, you know? That are between here and between there, you know? Are they a natural area or have they been developed before? They've been developed before, then it's infill. If they haven't been.
Right. And, and I, I think it's a, it's a reasonable question. It's a reasonable point. What I was trying to say is if you choose to say that it's not infill, then the fallback is the underlying zoning, whatever that happens to be. If it's an R four district, then it's, they can subdivide it and put four units an acre on. Unless you're deciding to then also change the underlying zoning to say, you know, we, we don't want to see this built on at all. That's a whole other question.
So I wonder if the word infill is the problem, because I feel like, um, you know, Jeff Nick also had some some trouble with the word infill. You know, he was actually thinking something very different than it sounds like Paul's thinking with, the, the word infill has a lot of like um preconceived ideas as to what it looks like. Cause you're right, when I think of infill, I think of exactly what you're talking about, but I kind of feel like the tool as described in these twelve pages is important. It's just not all called infill. So I, I don't know if there's a way to like have this PUD type just have a different name that's less like.
That was my comment before the meeting. But that was my comment initially, that I wasn't seeing, other than the, the size, I wasn't seeing a difference between this and the TND, that size is the only thing. And because of its size, it may have a few more flexibility issue, you know, more flexibility, because the smaller it is, the more, you know, yes, you can have, share the sidewalk that's on the other side of the road. So
It's almost like it should be called like a small or context sensitive beauty or, you know, it's, cause it's, there's.
I mean, the other TND light.
Of it, but not all of it, it seems like, yeah.
Or maybe the name.
Well, let us, let us think on that a little bit. And also I want to um think about Paul's comment of, you know, are we over, are we over complicating the question?
Yeah, that's.
You know, what, what would be effective being to say, you know, you're, if you're a certain size, you're just a standard subdivision for now? I don't, you know, that, that's, that's not a bad answer necessarily. Let, let me, let, let us think on a little bit of that so we can give you some informed.
Yeah, I, I think, I agree. I think the word infill is confusing. It's, it's confused me. And I've tried to steer clear of it, but, but when you said, oh yeah, this is the mini TND we've been talking about, I was like, oh, okay. That, it helped me understand it and it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we will pick back up uh at the next meeting. We also, under other business, have um the Williston bylaw amendments that were in here. Does anyone have anything on that?
Just a quick note in there that they are um reducing but not eliminating their parking standards. So they decided to both reduce them across the board and then incentivize even more. They weren't quite ready to go as far as, as we went, but they're moving in the same direction broadly. And then the rest of it is mostly just modifications to how they do some, some of their language.
And they're addressing cannabis sales.
And they're addressing cannabis sales, which is on our on, on the community list of things to address in the next eight months or so. And I think it's in the economic development committee to give a recommendation on that.
What was that talking about?
They're addressing cannabis, retail cannabis sales.
So for the next one though, in, in terms of the conservation PD, did let you asked, did we have any follow-up? And we didn't discuss in the last meeting, the first section, it wasn't about where it would go, but it was the purpose statements pertaining to conservation. And I, I did have some comments on that, but I don't think we should do it tonight. So can there be room at some point to specifically discuss purpose? Cause Paul had comments also on purpose.
Great.
Okay, thanks.
Sounds good. Okay, then I guess we're adjourned.
Just make sure there was nobody.
Oh, anything from the public?
Alright, thanks, everybody.
We're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.